Today is Monday, August the eighth, 2022. The time is now five P M. The work session of the city council with city Trinidad will now come board. We have five items for discussion tonight. Item one is the sale of city-owned property. Item two is a discussion of property exchange and property purchase. Item three is a discussion of marijuana consumption, public delivery, and reduction of cultivation fee. Item four is a second quarter 2022 marijuana sales tax allocation discussion. Item five is a CML policy committee appointment and discussion of any legislative or policy proposals for the committee to consider. So let's go ahead and get started with item number one, sale of city-owned property. Ms. Garrett, what do you have for me?
Do you want me to hand the podium or over here?
You're fine there. Where do you feel comfortable?
Either way. Okay, so this city has a request to purchase a piece of property that's located off of Highway 160. So as you pass the railroad tracks, Highway 160, going past Big R, pass Big R, pass the railroad tracks, there's a triangular piece of property that the city owns in there. It's landlocked. We don't even have an easement to the property. So we have a request for someone who wants to move he and his family back to Trinidad and wants to place a home there and live on that property if the city would be willing to sell it.
Okay.
The only access would be through his dad's property and obviously he wouldn't have to give an easement to someone else. So it would either sit and be our ownership and we would do nothing with it or we would allow housing to locate there.
How many acres is it?
I need to get, fill a legal description for it and get it surveyed. So I'll let you know acreage. I don't think it's a lot of property, but it would be enough for for him to place a home there. So just kind of looking for council's thumbs up or thumbs down on whether you want us to pursue the sale of that property.
That's just some questions from the council.
Is it worth pursuing?
Is it? I'm sorry.
Is it worth pursuing, pursuing that property? If it's landlocked, you said?
Well, it's not of any use to the city because of its location.
He wants to buy it for a sudden, maybe. And it's landlocked, but he has, and I'm sorry if you mention this, but he has a relative that has an adjoining parcel. So he would be granted, you know, let's say a prescriptive easement to use that land. Nobody else would be. So and it has never been used for a city purpose or whatever. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sure this was part of the property that the city acquired through water rights with Malia. It was part of Malia's property on both sides of the highway there.
And I don't see any reason why we should keep it then.
Does it have any impact on if one of the plans was to change that interchange there? I don't know exactly where it is because we can't picture it. Does it have any impact on our ability to do that if that's something?
I think we're just talking about, I think it's too far away.
Yeah, that's all I know. It's beyond Big R on the highway that would run right past Big R, past UPS.
Okay, it's next to the highway.
Oh, no.
Okay.
And then it's past those railroad tracks on the right-hand side.
So are you finished? So why do we not have, why can't we just give you a vote on this and we can sell it? We don't have to go through a vote to the people? Or we do?
No, we don't. We don't.
We don't.
Because it's never been used for a municipal purpose, right? So, yeah, it's just, yeah.
I have no objection. Don't get it.
Is there any part of that area out there that we are thinking of annexing at some point? Is it adjacent to anywhere? An ex or anywhere?
No, our city limits within just beyond the backside of Big R. We have one house that's there, but then beyond that, there's probably, I'm going to guess, five houses and then the railroad tracks. I don't see us annexing that.
No questions except for it's on the right or the left-hand side of the triangle? I know that area I was just asking.
It would be on the right-hand side.
Going east.
Is Trinidad close to that?
No.
No.
No, it's, so I guess it's on, let's say if you're driving, it'd be on the south side.
I have no questions.
Do we have to get an appraisal on that so we'll know what the cost would be?
Either that or else comparables again. Find out the acreage and get comparables. I think that's probably a more logical approach, so it won't cost so much.
Right.
As opposed to getting an appraisal.
Reasonable market value. I'm sure. I'm okay with it. I don't see a reason why to keep it if it's not doing us any good. It's landlocked.
So we'll go ahead and get a survey and legal description and then we'll know the acreage, get comparables, and come back with an item for council to approve the sale.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item two, discussion of property exchange and property purchase. And do you want to cover that or do you want me to cover it or you?
I can cover that and you can fill in blanks. The city has an opportunity to exchange acreage for acreage essentially. There's a little bit more being exchanged on one side, slightly more. So the property owner that has approached the city on this exchange is Louis Oslaw. He owns property off of Highway 12 that abuts the state park, Trinidad State Lake, Trinidad State Park. I'm saying that wrong. Trinidad.
We know what you mean.
State Park. And the city owns property that's in the middle of basically where he and his family homestead. And our property has, our property is full of, oh, boy. Languages.
Tailings.
Yep, mine tailings. So.
We rehearsed.
It makes the property challenging at best to even access. Dangerous is probably a better word for it, for the city to access. But it's literally in the middle of the Oslaw family property. So they would, they would be willing to exchange the Highway 12 property for the property that, where they homestead it. Where their property is is below Fisher's Peak, just to the south of, it'll be to the south of where, I guess between, best way to describe between where the group of houses are past the hotel and then where Baccarat's house was further south in that area and then, and then back towards the peak. That's where, where they have their property. So he's willing to make that exchange. And in addition to that, there's additional property that he would be willing to sell to the city of Trinidad. It would provide the city access from Highway 12 because otherwise we would have to acquire an easement or some other mechanism to even get to the property that we would be exchanging. So he would be willing to sell the additional property that leads to the property that he's proposing for an exchange. That, the proposal is between $2,000, $2,500 per acre. So the overall purchase would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000, but we would acquire a pretty good chunk of property that the city could then use however we see fit, but most likely, you know, to further our outdoor recreation efforts that the city's undertaken. It'd be a great property, so.
You know, and you're right with the property that we're exchanging. The property exchange actually, we're getting more property than what he's getting. Because I think we've got right around close to 100 acres or something. Now we're getting 100 and.
60, I want to say.
130 acres, 120 acres, something like that. And then the property purchased, the property that we would purchase is around 140, 150 acres is what we're looking at. And one of the things that Audra and I have discussed is that instead of having to go out and try to find grants to purchase the property, that we have some proceeds, we have some funds available that we could just purchase it outright. That we don't have to go through all that, all that issue with going through DOLA or someplace else to purchase it. We have money from that exit 14. We also have another, almost close to $2 million in another fund that we're using, that we may use to purchase this other property we're talking about. But there's actually close to $2 million out there that we have available to us. So we feel that maybe that might be the best avenue. One of the things I have called into Tara Marshall about this is that she and I had a brief discussion on this a while back and she said there might be some additional funding if there's a build out at this other property we're purchasing for build out. There might be some money available and just go in there. You know, so just try to find out that information. She hasn't responded to me yet. So we'll open up for questions.
Does it benefit for the city as well as Ms. Oslaw? Yeah, perfect.
I think it's a great opportunity, but you need to, I'm not really good at maps, so give me a little 411 quick on here. So this is the map of the property.
Of which we brought it.
Okay, that's the land we're exchanging.
Okay, what it is is.
So where's the highway?
The highway is right here, this highway.
Okay.
And the property that we're going to acquire is going to be this section right in here. It's like an L shape. And then the property that he is currently wanting to sell is this.
Okay.
And this property is on the other side of the highway.
Okay, I thought that's what we were going to buy, this and this, but it's.
It's just this portion.
Okay.
You're going to take the map, maybe in school?
No, I didn't.
You guys understand that.
Yes, I did, but not, no, I think that's a great idea. We've looked at that property and it's.
So overall, we'd be getting close to, close to 270, 280 acres overall of property with the property exchange and property purchase.
And how many acres are yours?
I want to say ours is approximately 120.
Oh, wow, okay.
And what this property that they exchange is close to 130, so we're, any, it's a, I mean, that's a good deal. Can you get more than what you're getting when you give it up?
Absolutely.
Other questions?
We had a chance to take a look at it and it is just exclusively beautiful property and the potential for the Italian for recreation to state lakes. A lake.
I was not going to try it.
And I hope eventually that we could possibly use the other land as well of recreational for the city. But it is exquisite land.
Yeah.
So I have a question. First, once we acquire it or once the deal goes through, what's the next step? Do we start on it this year or is that something that goes into next year's?
I think the whole thing would be we put it back into Brian Jared's hands to begin looking at how we would develop that or do we leave it as it is? And just, or do you want to develop more trails? And that's where, like I said, I mentioned, I'll talk to Tara Marshall because that's where she said that if we needed to build out like any facilities, like toilet facilities or whatever.
I think it's perfect time, especially with the new city manager coming through to, he has something to dig his teeth into, so.
I just have one question. Our existing property, is that, is that 100% landlocked by the Oslaws' property? So, okay, I mean, that's even, even, you know, makes a stronger case for it. Like Council Nogal Street said, we did have the opportunity to see it. It's fantastic property. I, I think we would be crazy to not do it. You know, we're.
Actually, you know, it's, there again, once, once again, once in a lifetime opportunity that, and you know, what we're headed with recreation, I think it just creates an opportunity. There are some things that we're going to have to consider is access. Do we want to try to maybe, I know that talking with CPW, they're concerned about access coming to their end of the park on their side, but there's maybe an opportunity that maybe we can have access directly from the state park into our property and can we protect them? So there's some discussion that'll have to go on, so that, but I think there's something we can be done with this. But I think the big thing is, is tying up the property and moving forward.
Well, we're talking the talk, we better walk the walk. If we're talking about recreation and outdoor tourism, then this is like a gift.
Yeah, it is. So I guess what's the next, what's the, what's the next?
So I will reach out to Mr. Oslaw and see if he has surveys for his property and see what we have with respect to our property, if it has to be surveyed or if we can use it. I'm hoping we have a legal description of some sort that we're a survey and so that we can start working on the language that we need to get this property exchange done as well as the purchase.
I guess maybe one of the, next that I get open and I talked to Gary Terry and I haven't been back to visit him to see if he had any surveys of that property. He thought he might have a survey on some of it on the old, on the parcel. So maybe I'll go back and I'll visit and see. I'm going to, not expect from scratch on the survey. And I guess the only other thing on that would be on the part that we're going to purchase, would we want an appraisal on that for dollar value or what would we want to do? I think if he says 2,000 an acre, I don't think that's a bad.
I think that's so inexpensive and I think he's doing that just for some money because I'm certain he could sell that for so much.
Yeah, so I think we can, you can ask him if he's willing to go with that. What is, what is his value? What's his dollar amount? Yeah, all right. Call him up and let's see where we start the process. Item three, discussion of marijuana consumption, public delivery, and reduction of cultivation fees. There's three different items here. And item one is, you know, consumption clubs and, you know, that was brought up when they, we had that meeting here that night and a couple of the, I guess, the retail outlets would like to see, and there's some people that would like to see a consumption club. And we've taken a vote on that before and, you know, council had not, was not in favor of the consumption club. And it's still a, an issue out there. I, if it still remains the same, I don't see where it's going to go anywhere. As far as, you know, if we brought it up to a vote again, I don't know. The council would think. And in actuality, one of the things that I'm thinking about is that it's kind of like just the regular marijuana retail and medical and everything that we have going on right now. I'm not sure if this would be an issue or not. Sometimes I almost think of maybe that should go to the voting of people. Let the, let the vote of the people determine it and then codify it into, into permanent. Because what's going to happen is this consumption club is going to continue to come up, you know, in the next couple of years. And we have a change in, in council and they could vote it in. And then people would really be mad, you know? So I think that's, so I think, I think the people would, and I'm not sure what's. Des, what do you think?
Well, Mayor, I will tell you because council adopted the entire local, you know, marijuana ordinance and the entire allowed the sale of medical and then retail marijuana. I think it's within the province of council. And I, I understand your, you know, your thoughts and the suggestion that maybe people would like to vote on it, but it just seems like that is, you know, hospitality facilities or consumption clubs, that's kind of a small category of the overall, you know, marijuana scheme. And it just seems to me like, you know, council did the whole marijuana thing. So I think it's better left with, with all of, with, with council. That's my opinion.
I think we would have a lot more information now than we did then. And now we can see what's happening in Denver and wherever else around the state and what has been learned from it. This map that we have in front of us that.
Would you like me to?
Sure.
Sure. These are the maps that I put together.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, council.
I think we're good there.
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak. I didn't know when exactly to start speaking. But this first map, you can tell it's from May because Rhode Island has flipped. Rhode Island flipped to adult use in late May. So now the total number of states that have adult-use marijuana is 20, including D.C. And the grass grain is medical and there are an additional 18 states that sell medically. So overall, there are 38 states that have legal weed. And so I just wanted to bring that up to council because they are flipping so quick. And so this is the most accurate map that I could find. It was from National Conference of State Legislatures. Just so you can see how quick it's turning. In fact, right now, 77% of the U.S. population resides in a state with legal cannabis. And in 2021, 68% of Gallup poll respondents supported legalizing marijuana federally. Texas right now accounts for more than a third of the population without access. But they are bordered by New Mexico and Oklahoma. And Oklahoma has a third of the grows in the U.S. Oklahoma has 8,000 grows, whereas Colorado has 800 adult-use grows. So.
They have a lot of water in Oklahoma.
Oh, yeah.
And. Land. So, yeah, because, so just, just certain things about the industry I want to bring up because they're so interesting. Any data is so interesting. And then the second map that I have is from 2021. So thank you, Des. It only shows six states, but since then, New York, Pennsylvania, New Mexico, Arizona, Massachusetts, and Nevada. Is that last one? So, and it's a mix of BYO and buy-on-site. There's two in Alaska, maybe 18 or so in California right now, but it'll probably triple in the next few years. Nevada only has one. It's on Paiute land, but they will award 65 licenses this fall. New Mexico has one in Las Cruces that's up and running. One is in the works in Raton. Denver has anywhere between like six and 10. I was trying to research the exact number and that's a mix of kinds too. Colorado Springs has one. Illinois has two. They're both right outside Chicago. Michigan will open multiple this summer. New Jersey will open one by the end of this year. New York just changed their laws to know you are legally allowed to consume marijuana anywhere tobacco is consumed. There's one in Tucson, Arizona. One in Boston, one in Manchester, and one in Missouri. And that doesn't include events, tour buses, hotels, then breakfast. And as far as other countries, there's Uruguay, Malta, Switzerland, Austria, Germany, New Zealand, Spain. There's a bunch. And so I guess we can all agree that the stigma is lifting and I think people are starting to understand that weed does not cause crime and it's just another industry, an industry that will still explode, especially as it, there are more states flipping. And consumption clubs are one of the, what does someone say about consumption clubs? The innovators and proponents for their legalization see it as a prime opportunity to better compete in a saturated market, attract new customers, and grow market share. It'll push the industry forward and normalize cannabis use. So that's just all the numbers and stuff and you can discuss. And let me know if you have any questions. I can look up whatever too. So if I don't have it now, I can get it for you at the next meeting.
Please, what's from council?
I don't have a question when I have a comment. Is this appropriate? So I'm right down there, block away from the 400 block of North Commercial. And I'm able to intimately see the progression cleaning up of the 400 block of North Commercial Street prior to marijuana coming. Just that, and I'm really aware of what's going on down there because I work down there eight hours a day. But I've seen the metamorphosis of that, of that area of Trinidad. It was dead and/or died prior to 2017. I bet you at least 50% of the story, storefronts in that one block were empty. They were dilapidated, they were an eyesore. And for me, that really, the, the life of Trinidad ended right there on Cedar Street. From then on, there was not anything except for maybe the Budweiser distributor who isn't there anymore. But I've seen what marijuana has done for this community. I'm not a user, which has nothing to do with anything, but I am a business person and I see what marijuana has done for the economy of Trinidad. I don't think there's a person in this community that hasn't benefited from some type of tax for marijuana. Every department within the city has benefited. I mean, we've got, our equipment is top-notch. We've been able to do things and, you know, I'm just, I hope you give me this time to give you my synopsis of why I think Trinidad needs to lead the way on, on consumption clubs. It's, it's true, marijuana is not the evil weed that everybody thought it was. But I've seen what that industry has done for Trinidad. And you, you see people, these buildings are now alive. You see people walking up and down Commercial Street. Every business in Trinidad is benefiting from that, from that business. And I think if we don't have the courage to do something to enhance that business, I think we're going to lose, we're going to lose a big market share that. I went by one pot shop, 15% off. When have you ever seen a pot shop that has a for sale sign for 15% off of their product? And really, what really has made, in my opinion, Trinidad flourish is because these people never came off the interstate because whatever they needed was right off all the exits. The only thing that made them come to downtown Trinidad was the marijuana, the pot shops, the cannabis shops. So once they've gone down there, they've seen the architecture. They, we've had businesses like restaurants or galleries that they're able to entertain themselves. I think it's a win-win situation for the community. So that's just my, my opinion. I think we would be making a mistake if we didn't try to implement this. I mean, thank God for whoever the council was in 2017 that didn't put a limit on pot shops because, I mean, that made Trinidad somewhat unique. If people come off the highway, because it's easy to get to the shops. And I, I just think it would be silly for us not to try and find a way to do this. My opinion.
Other comments?
Like I was just saying, I think we know a lot more now than we did when we had that discussion at the beginning of COVID, basically about this. I remember we were not in person and nothing was really going on in Denver yet because the consumption clubs, they're worth open. So there was no data to work from. I'd really like to know how that's going. I read through the statutory requirements, the regulatory requirements, and it seems like a very well-thought-out, not reckless kind of approach that the state has presented to make available to cities. I like the idea that we would be continuing to run with something that like. I like the idea that we would be continuing to run with something that like Councilwoman Rego said has been of such a benefit to this community and to do it professionally, to do it well, to do it in a way that we're proud of. I'm proud of our dispensaries. I don't have any, and I'm proud that they're here and they are working so hard and they've provided so many jobs. So I, I just look at it as a way to continue that, that theme. I think it, it plays in well with the recreation theme. I think there are a lot of people who are bike riders who also use marijuana. You know, I, I don't know, like, like Councilwoman Rego, I'm not a user and again, it's no difference whatsoever. I've seen it have a good impact on, on people that I know well. It's helped people with pain, avoiding opioids and, you know, I just think it's like you said, it's not the, the evil that was put out there. It's, it is another way that people relax and enjoy life. And I think it would be, I would be proud to host consumption clubs because I think we would do it well.
I like that. Yeah, I agree with Ogletree and Rego. Cannabis definitely ties into tourism off the top without question, especially when you're in consumption clubs. Definitely ties into the economy far as keeping the tourists in town for maybe 24 hours, 48 hours, seven, you know what I mean? Just another way to generate passive income to small business owners and to keep people in our town longer than to pick up gas and grab a turkey sandwich at Safeway and get back on the highway headed north to a consumption club in the big, big city. I would love to have one here on this end of town. Got some up north and some in the south of this beautiful state. So definitely ties into tourism and you need to have that. I think it's a great idea. I'm not quite here. So people, I've talked to people in this town who've been here since the 90s and the late, mid to late 90s and talk about how great this town was and how it was rocking and rolling and I, you know, my mind just goes into the heyday of this town being bustling and going really hard for, without cannabis. You know, I guess it was oil and gas at the time, keeping everybody here and keeping the economy rich. So I wouldn't want to lose that just because we didn't take a gamble on, because we can gamble on it and get it going and then if it doesn't work, we can be like, all right, we tried it, but let's try it at least.
Other question. I'm gonna take you guys back when marijuana started. Like I said, I came on in 2016. And at that time, there were, it was completely open. There was no, as many as people wanted to apply, they could. There were 40, I think there were 46 or something like that CUPs available. Within those CUPs, there were all the other CUPs. So there could have been over 100 CUPs within the different grows and all the others that are there. And at that time, there was a lot of pushback from the city saying, why so many? So if you look at that, how many of these cannabis hospitalities are we gonna have? Are we going to have 26 in town? Are we gonna have 10? Are we gonna have five? Is it gonna be unlimited again? What? How, I mean, years ago. And I'm hearing from the constituents of the community saying, don't you dare bring it, bring hospitality into Trinidad. I mean, these people are, there's a lot of people are pretty upset of us even thinking about it. There's people I'm sure that would like to have, but that's fine. But there's really two sides of the, of the story here. So as far as the can be cannabis industry right now, we're in, in another anomaly. The first anomaly, talking to Shell, the 20 and 21 timeframe, the amount of money that we got was phenomenal. And, but that was an anomaly. And now we're in a different anomaly. The reduction of cannabis that's being sold recreational wise, I think it has a lot to do with the gas prices and people just not traveling. So that's having a huge impact on, on the cannabis industry right now and people just traveling, period. I just, I, and I know that, like I forget, I think you said there was somebody that was offering 50% off. And they're, what they're trying to do is they're, they're trying to maintain their market share. And that's usually what happens with any industry. I don't care if it's that cannabis. I don't care if it's the building industry. I don't care if it's the clothing industry. The clothing industry is probably the worst one. When the prices and there's a recession and, you know, there's other factors, inflation going on, the first thing they do is they try to, they start offering discounts on all their products to try to, to try to maintain their market share. So that's the anomaly that we're in right now with the, with the cannabis industry and not only cannabis industry, but every other type of retail industry across this country. So as far as, my concern is, how many would we have? If you have one, then you live with other people to be able to have one. So if you have five other people, all the other 26 are going to want to have a, maybe not all, but I'm just guessing that all 26 may want to have a hospitality room. And right now, the industry says that they're supposed to contain the smell of the cannabis. It doesn't happen. You could go around town to, down Commercial Street and go up to the south, you move to the north, and the smell is not being contained. So I'm thinking about hospitality rooms, supposedly there's, there's a way to contain it.
They make smoke eaters.
But will they?
I don't know what you're saying.
They make smoke eaters, like they did for cigarettes.
So I, I, but I, I just, and like I said, if currently the recreational marijuana industry is supposed to contain the smell of their, of what they produce now, it's not, it's almost impossible. So I, I, I just think that, and that's why I brought up the question of the mode of the people, to let them decide whether or not that's something we want to do or not, that, I guess that's something that we can take from, and discuss. I want, but I, because I think that, anyway, that, that's, that's my.
Go ahead. I want, go ahead. I want to say something super quickly if I can.
You never do.
I never do. You know, I've, in like, I think 1903 or 1904, they started selling the Model A Ford. Ford had a huge, huge market share because they were the only people selling an affordable family car. It wasn't until 19, like 12, a long way away, that Chevy started selling something and suddenly Ford had to do something that they weren't doing or that's competing, the competition. This map, thank you. This map, well, it's a stretch to say we're in a similar situation. This map is showing that we are now in competition. So we are going to see continued decline, unfortunately. I think the, the best way to help the marijuana industry, because the best way to help the marijuana industry, to counsel woman Ogletree's point, she said some demographic that comes here, she believes a lot of them use it. Probably, it seems to me that that's probably true. I mean, we have, how many ice cream stores in Trinidad and how many marijuana stores?
How many bars?
Right. But people, people use that product. I think the single best thing we can do to help our marijuana industry, myself, is to get more people in this town. You get more people in this town and a certain percentage of them are going to visit shops. So let's really, really focus on becoming a tourist destination, especially to what Mayor Rico said, in this age of increased gas cost and inflation. People are still recreating, but they're doing it closer to home. So again, I've said it a lot, we need to catch the people going to Fruta. We need to catch the people going up north and stop them here. We'll stop more people here. Again, we'll have a larger influx of people for tourism, but those people will use marijuana. So they'll, they'll continue to purchase it. That's what I think.
Mayor. Well, that's, it's a two-fold thing with me though, to Councilman Williamson, because it seems like nobody hesitates when we're doling out this money that marijuana generates. So I'm thinking they, part of it is, to me, it's a moral issue. If, let them try, if, if they can do it, let them try it. They've, they've been good stewards of the real estate in town. They've been, you know, they've, they've renovated, rehabbed a lot of businesses, a lot of buildings. And if we're going to do that, why are we taking from one hand and giving it back with another? That's not the right thing to do. I mean, they've done well with their regulations. We've had no issues. So I don't think that's, that's a problem. But what really solidified my mind, because at first I was kind of iffy on consumption clubs, but really what solidified my mind was that night, it was during COVID, so we had a Zoom meeting and we had the pros and cons, remember that? I'd say 90% of the cons on that, on, in that meeting were, was bad information, misinformation, not the right information. People were, there, the information against it wasn't, in my mind, solid information. If the truth be known, I could leave Council tonight and drop a gummy on my way out and go in and go to a restaurant. How are you gonna know? I mean, I think it's happening now. But when you talk about, not me. You talk about consumption clubs. Like there's a, there's a business in town that does painting and you drink wine or beer. Why not let people go to a marijuana shop, say, okay, you consume what you want and then we're gonna do an artistic drawing? I mean, I don't think we're thinking about it the way we should be. There's so many diverse ways to do that.
You know, there's, there's another aspect to this is that for the public itself is that, let's say there's consumption clubs that we have. And somebody walks in there and they have been, let's say, drinking alcohol. Now they want to go consume marijuana. So they will go in and they're there and then they leave shortly after and they may still be intoxicated. And they, they caused an accident. Who is, who's going to be responsible, which, I mean, that's not for us to say, but that's for us to think about. Who is responsible for that accident?
Been through all that.
Is, is it, is it going to be the alcohol that, where they purchased it from? Where they were, or the marijuana shop that they purchased it from? And so, so there's going to be inebriation with people going around. And that, that's what, that's another part that scares me. And I, you know, we have, we have Chief Laurie also here tonight. Chief, do you want to come and give us, you know, some input on your thoughts?
No.
And, and Chief.
Yeah, so thank you for putting me on the spot.
Yeah.
You know, I haven't done any research on it, to be fair. Here, if it does come to fruition that you want to do it, you know, way beforehand, I'll, I'll start looking into seeing the pros and cons myself, you know? But I am going to stand here in a little bit asking for $50,000 benefit of marijuana. So it's, it's kind of, it's a bit of a story. But, you know, I can't make an educated suggestion right now.
Okay. Thank you.
To your answer to your question. Who's gonna get it? The guy that served him the alcohol and this guy that served him cannabis? You don't know attorneys very well because everybody's gonna get it.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Right?
Right. And they're required to have insurance is, is fourth in these regulations. But yeah, and, and really, it actually gives you someone else too, Sue, if you do get hit by a drunken stone driver, if you learn that they were consuming marijuana at this, you know, hospitality facility, because they have to have insurance. So it would give you another. I was a bartender for 20 years before I got into food, believe it or not. So bartenders can get in trouble big time. They easily go back into people's credit card history and look how many drinks that they had. Bartenders get in trouble all the time if they, because they have the right to cut people off. If you've had too much, we train and be like, all right, give them some coffee or order that vodka tonic down really well or put some, put some alcohol in the straw so when they get that first initial sip of vodka, then it's all water after that. So, yeah, it's weird. So with that being said, I think what's gonna happen with though, with that situation or who's responsible? Lawyers will easily go back and be like, all right, let's go to both these spots and how much did you, because there's no limit on weed, right? If you're smoking, if you got it, smoking, if you got it. Alcohol is, they do a thing where how many drinks did you have? It's gonna pass through your liver in so many hours and they can determine how, you know, messed up you are. So at some point, marijuana.
Well, there is a limit, how much we get served.
Right, we serve, but I mean. Nanograms per milligram. I think these kinds of clubs let you bring it home sometimes.
Could I speak to that, please? If, if I could, I don't mean to interrupt Council. I just want to say I have a really, really strong sense of deja vu. And the chief probably feels it, maybe Tom and Audra. But, you know, back when Council was just talking about whether or not to have retail marijuana, I mean, medical marijuana was a thing. And Council was discussing retail marijuana and whether or not to do it. Man was yet ever emotional. And people were angrily, angrily saying, don't do marijuana. What's it gonna look like? What's gonna happen? And we had some people that we've had before Council recently who were strong opponents of marijuana who said, we're gonna leave the community if you allow the sale of retail marijuana. I mean, it was angry and it was heated. And this kind of in, you know, in retrospect is kind of a much smaller issue, but you do have the kind of visceral, emotional kind of pushback. But I did just want to say, Audra, in your materials, in the Department of Revenue Regulations behind the, the excise taxes for the communities, there are four main license types in there. One is, one is licensed hospitality businesses, which is an existing business that is allowed to have an area for people to come in and smoke their marijuana. So they have a number of those in Denver. And you go in, you're completely walled off, you can't have alcohol. You go in, you bring your marijuana and you consume your marijuana in there. The other kind, the second kind is retail marijuana hospitality and sales businesses. And those are basically like consumption clubs where you go in and you have to buy your marijuana right there. You can only buy small amounts, only for amounts for consumption on the premises. And that is that license type. And you can't bring in any, again, you have to only consume what is there. The other one is marijuana hospitality business, mobile premises, like we were talking back in the day, with the limos and the buses. And then the other one is marijuana delivery, which I know is, is also on the agenda. So I know those are kind of attenuated thoughts, but I just want to say that it was very emotional, very difficult back in the day when the council was first, first talking about this. And people were like, if you legalize marijuana, we are going to lose our community. It is, it is gonna circle the drain. You're gonna, and how dare you even think about doing this? Anyway, just very, very emotional. And this, and by the way, Durango has a code for this. I don't know if they've granted any licenses, but Durango has implemented a municipal provision for granting hospitality or consumption club licenses. This is just like, it would be easy to do and it just kind of is one more logical step. And my last point is, if Trinidad wants to be different in terms of tourism, that's a way to be different. I don't mean to sound like I'm advocating, it's not my position, but it just is. It, it's, it would be easier than one thinks. It's out there, oh, and I want to say too, Denver revamped the. It's out there, oh, and I want to say too, Denver revamped the regulations in November of last year. And they're, they're taking off. And there are a number of restaurants now that allow the licensed hospitality business, meaning the area where you bring your own weed, you're out of sight, out of mind. There are a lot of those, but they're now becoming a lot of retail marijuana hospitality and sales businesses as well. They're taking off in Denver. And if you Google it, um, you either consumption clubs or hospitality licenses in, in Denver, you see that there are a lot. Tleetha is absolutely correct.
Let's get some thoughts, we see the rules forward or not, some individuals. What's your, uh?
Can I say one thing before you get to that? Um, actually, three things. First, I want to remind city council that before consumption club was actually a thing, we actually had one out in Industrial Park. And it didn't go anywhere, but that was before they could do any sales in there. So it was just a location where they could go in there and, um, enjoy marijuana. So we also had a bus, if you remember that. And, and so we've, in a sense, have allowed consumption in a roundabout way in the past. Third thing is, council has the ability to restrict the number. You don't have to allow them everywhere. You can allow one. You can do it by lottery. You can have them come in with a business plan and council decide, um, what's the best option for this consumption club. So you have options, but it has existed in the past. Um, and I would say probably very unintrusive businesses.
I got a question. I know we had green zones here, here in city Trinidad. Would that be a factor to have these located in those green zones that were?
To be honest with you, I would not want to see any downtown. Any, any place in the area that there are marijuana places right now? I, I don't agree with that area at all. It has to be, it would have to be completely outside, on the outskirts of town or of, of the municipal part of town. I just don't believe that it should, because we already have marijuana and the smells and all that stuff going on in town, and I, I, that concerns me.
I, I think the only smells I've ever smelled are people smoking marijuana outside. I mean, that's the only time I've ever smelled marijuana. So I, it would be nice to pretend that it doesn't happen, but it does.
I was down on Main Street, or commercial just moved a couple of days ago.
But I think that happens because we don't have public places where you can do that. So if that's the concern, I think that consumption clubs would actually address that.
I think these are, these smells are more coming from the growing industry.
I don't like the way it smells, so.
Well, I applaud the marijuana industry. They've been a tremendous asset towards having the tax revenue and to fund projects and allocate money for different organizations. If we need, if it needs to come to vote again, I guess we can do that. I'm not really convinced about social consumption clubs, you know, just with monitoring and, and location and regulations and liability. You know, and Springs has one, and there's six hundred thousand people that live in Springs. So if it's so great, why don't they add fifteen or twenty? You know, I'm just saying. Why is there only one?
Colorado Springs has.
I mean, it has to be, it has to be a big undertaking.
They're very conservative, Colorado Springs.
And I think Colorado Springs is gonna have retail marijuana, I think it'll pass so carey does. My military serves, so.
It has to be a huge undertaking. You know, flame retardant walls, you know, location, it's gonna cost a lot of money anyway, to begin with. Of course, they have a lot of money. But I, I just, I don't know if we're even sending the right message to our youth. I just think maybe the vote of the people also, like Mayor Rico stated. Not leave it all just up to council, even though we have the major input. But that's just my sentiments.
Well, I guess you know where I stand on this. Um, I don't have to tell you, but I would like at least council to be open-minded enough to let us get some more facts. Let us see what's being done in Denver and some other consumption clubs and see what the feedback is from not only the Yon Ash, but the, but the residents. I think to shut it down at this point is a, is a huge mistake. You know, you talk about what's going on, like in Springs, Eli, that there's not that, there's not consumption clubs. But we're always saying Trinidad is unique. What works in Trinidad might not necessarily work someplace else. But I think we need to at least give it a try. Let's, let's get some information. It's in our hands. We can do whatever we want. If we want to start off with just four or make limitations on the amount of square footage a building has, there's so many things that we can do to enforce and regulate this industry. I think we, we at least need to give it a try, as far as getting more information.
I don't have any comment. I'm not really too, too much interested in any clubs or anything like that. I think it's not a good thing for Trinidad, I really don't. But I'm willing to get some more information, like you said, and see what it says. That's my opinion.
I'd really like more information. I think that, like I already said, there's a lot more information out there that we could use and find out how things have gone. I think we could carefully craft whatever we want to have and, and see what happens. I also think that we are, you know, we're likely to lose some of our dispensaries over the next few years because of the competition, and that's gonna leave some places open. That might be good places for consumption clubs. So I, I just think it would be a mistake to let this opportunity go. Especially when we could do it whatever way we feel like is the best way, rather than just whatever. I think we could do it well.
I think that we could look at what everybody else has got going on, like, get all the stats, the facts, um, and then we can tweak it to our, to our town and do a cut and paste and keep moving. So, um, yeah, we can make it work and experiment and see what we can come up with.
I think to say that you're not open to more information is never wise plan. So I'm definitely open to more information. I think in the, um, for full disclosure and to be genuine, um, I'd like to say that the last time we did this, I, I really, really wrestled with that decision. I mean, really. And at this particular juncture, um, I, I feel the same way.
Yeah, I, I feel the same way. I haven't, I'm not changed, simply because the numbers, you know, I, I think we want more information. That's fine. But I think at this point, before we take it to an ordinance or anything else, that we just get more information. Because it's just, I just don't feel like there's enough information that we have and for council to make a decision to move it to the ordinance phase.
If I could, please, in terms of more information, like you want to know how it's going in Denver and, um, and maybe other communities that have, anything else?
Well, I think the other thing too, is I, I think, I really think that we need to let the community know and let them, they get, get.
The community has to have input.
The community has to have input on this, I think.
You always told if we have it on the agenda, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir.
That's all right.
If we have it on the agenda, that people will want to do that. But, but yeah, we can invite people to serve.
It'd be interesting, and I think this would probably be a hard, um, number to come up with. Um, unless potentially we were able to use that phone tracking information, I don't know. But, um, did, um, opening those, uh, types of establishment have any, um, absolutely, um, for sure impact on those revenues, you know, prior, post and prior to opening? I'm sorry, pre and post to opening? I don't know if that'd be possible. I mean.
The, uh, the, the businesses, the, the retail marijuana hospital and sales businesses cannot be, they can't like be connected to a retail marijuana store. They can't, you know, any connection. So I don't know, and it's in Denver. So I don't know, like, the, you know, having consumption clubs or hospitality businesses, but that would have really helped business, because I'm assuming that weed sales in Denver are probably pretty good. You know what I mean? I'm not trying to.
That, that's the argument, though, that it would, that it would help the weed sales. That's, that's the argument that it's based. And weed sales and tax revenues are public.
Well, I, but I think if you think about the economy of Denver compared to our economy and the relative, um, effect that it would have on a community, economically, I think it would have a much greater relative effect.
Right.
It wouldn't really be comparable.
And I think also, like, because of the small amount, the, the very small amount that one is limited to buying in a hospital set, uh, I'm sorry, hospitality and sales business, that like if you come in and you buy two ounces and then go, that is a lot more weed than, say, twenty people are going to buy for consumption on the premises. You know what I mean?
Right.
So I, I think it's kind of more of a cultural adding to the big picture draw of Trinidad rather than.
It's an offset.
Right, rather than increasing marijuana sales. I may be splitting hairs here.
Definitely an offset, for sure.
Well, it's the analogy like the vineyards in California. You go to look at the vineyards in California and you go to a tastement. If you like what they have there, you buy it or you can, most of the time, you consume it there. I can't see where cannabis can't be one aspect of our tourism businesses.
Well, like I said, it sounded like we just want to get more information.
So to clarify the information that we're getting, again, is, um, community feedback input, um, placers, foot traffic, um, around those places in Denver? Um, revenues that, that are publicly accessible? Um, the effect on the community, how, how?
Snaking and alcohol crossover overlap or what would they call it?
They can't.
No, I mean, just, I know they can't, but that doesn't stop the person from, like, you say, leaving one place.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, okay.
But really, too, I mean, and I'm not a council member, but I would like to, you know, get ahold of some of these Denver clubs and see how business is going.
And so would you rather talk to the owner?
I think rather than a Denver club, I think that we'd have, I think the best thing to do is find a community similar size of Trinidad or smaller or just slightly larger. If they have anything and what have the effect that they have. Because comparing us to Denver, comparing us to Colorado Springs, and even comparing us to Pueblo, doesn't make sense.
So Glendale?
Because, but then the reason being, the reason being is that, and especially outlying areas. We're in an outlying area, whereas the Pueblo, Colorado Springs, Denver, they're more, you know, kind of inside of Colorado, so they have more of a captive audience, whereas we don't.
So you'd rather talk to, um, an official from Parachute or Glendale?
I think I understand. Why don't we talk about this? I would still like to reach out to Denver, I think other council members might want to know and how business is going and if it's any idea.
What their rules and rigs are.
Exactly.
So like an owner?
We could call Durango, uh, because Durango, you know, has the ordinance. So we could try to find other communities that they're allowing it and if they actually have businesses that are up and running.
But, but I was thinking, the reason we would talk about those Denver places is because they've been doing it for a little while and they figured out how to do it well.
They've been, they've been doing it, I think, for a year, because it's just been a year that these consumption clubs have come around. And at the time that they came out, there was only one in Denver that they were allowing. And I'm not, like, so how many do they have now?
I don't know. There, there were a few back then, but there were only, there was only one that was actually open because of COVID that I called them anyways. But, um, that's all. I just want to know what their experience has been like? Has it, uh, have they been able to follow the regulations? Have, you know, what kinds have worked well, what ones? That's all, that's what I'm saying. I'm not asking so much economically, because I think it's not really comparable.
I think the other thing too on that is I think it'd be a good idea, if you can, get information from their police departments.
How do we determine the, the teens in those communities?
The offensive what?
On, on the teens in those communities?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I do.
Okay. If you can, if you can think of a, if you can think of a statistic, then I can, then I will.
Okay, because they have to be twenty-one to enter. And I would just think that, and I didn't mean to interrupt council, you know, the truth.
But go ahead.
And I, but we'll talk about this.
Okay, yeah, we'll find.
We'll have fun.
The other thing is, is don't feel like you need to have this in the next thirty days. Give yourself some time to do it appropriately.
Next works. We'll have fun.
Okay, let's go on to, uh, I'm doing delivery. Like I said, that's a different issue. I think to me, it's a smaller issue. I'm not sure what you guys think about delivery. The way the regulations read as far as delivery goes, it's, there again, there's people that might have come to stay in a hotel in Trinidad, they want to deliver it to them. They want to go and smoke it out back, so that becomes a consumption club by itself. Uh, so.
Maybe we just take consensus.
Sure. On the delivery?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's consensus on, uh, delivery?
Well, I think delivery provides convenience and flexibility and privacy, because a lot of people want to be discreet about their purchase, first of all. And it, you know, uh, it's a nice option for those who are confined to the residence because of some type of disability or may suffer from mobility restrictions. So I, I think it's a good option.
I do, I think it's an option we should look at as well.
I think I read through all those regulations and they seem very, um, tight and clear. And I can't imagine why we wouldn't allow that or have that as a possible way.
Think about how I could get a DoorDash delivery.
Uh, yeah, uh, for sure, as far as disability and just, you know, winter time and all kinds of little things, just deliveries, like, you know, it's just a, it's just a small thing.
You know, it's interesting, go ahead.
I, I agree with council, I think I read it all grand months ago.
You know, the thing that's interesting is the, the amount of upfront costs for delivery system is pretty big. So someone that's going to undertake that, it's gotta be ready for it. And it could be an into our dispensary or something to do, so. So that one, I think that, I think that we can probably move that into, if it's an ordinance phase or whatever, I think we could probably move that forward. Uh, next thing is cultivation. I know that we, uh, that was one of the big issues that came up was to, uh, because we're at twenty-five dollars per pound now. Uh, the average, I think, is right around twelve dollars per pound. There was one entity, I think, that was, that was here that night that was seeing, or certainly maybe it was somebody absolutely saying that they would, they would move to Pueblo. Except for being bothered, they'd move to Pueblo. And, uh, if you notice, their excise is eight, some of these places are eight percent and can go up higher than that. So the benefit of them moving anywhere, so I guess, I, I think that maybe we can provide them some benefit, but what that benefit will be, I think that's up to everybody here to try to determine somewhere between that ten or twelve or what we have right now, twenty-five dollar per pound fee. So I, I'm not sure what you guys feel is reasonable? Because if you're looking at the average, I think, and it was, what, twelve dollars, I think?
That's, I'm trying to see where you saw that, because I.
There's somewhere, there's, there's an average.
So, um, unfortunately, I was able to find a lot of information on this topic. Um, and I also reached out to Melinda with Trinidad Gardens to have her verify if I was interpreting it correctly. Um, on the first couple of pages, that information came from Colorado Department of Revenue. It's the current retail marijuana average market rates. And you'll see on there where it's, this is. And you'll see on there where it's, this is adjusted quarterly or viewed quarterly. And so you can see where, for instance, in January of 2021, marijuana was at one of the higher points since 2016. 2016, it was significantly higher, especially in 2015. Anyhow, since 2021, January of 2021, the price for per pound average market rate for bud, for instance, went from $1,721 down to where we are now at $709. It just in, um, between April 1st to July 1st, it dropped an additional $90. So, um, but that's on bud. If you look at the next, well, actually, let's skip ahead to the spreadsheet. That, that's the information where I gathered current average, average market rate. Again, source was Colorado Department of Revenue for the various forms of marijuana. And at the very top, you'll see that Trinidad charges a flat $500 per pound of cultivated marijuana regardless of the form that it's in. So-
Excuse me, I can't, I don't know where you are.
Um, it would be on, oh, okay, mine doesn't go across. Okay. Did you find it?
Okay, yes, sorry, thank you.
So regardless of the form, 500 pounds is going to cost the cultivator $12,500. Second line on there shows what Department of Revenue's buy or somebody with a 5% excise tax would gain from that same 500. Wow, let's put it this way. It's at the market rate of $19,000 and it drops down. But what I want you to pay attention to is how it drops with respect to trim, whole wet plants, trim allocated for extraction, bud allocated for extraction and flash frozen. That's where we're hurting our cultivating market. That's because we're charging just a flat $25 per pound regardless of the form. That's where they're being hurt. And, um, trim is about 40% of their harvest. So you can see where the impact is then. It's not on bud. It's on every other form of that marijuana plant where, where they're not able to make a living cultivating like they were able to previously. So I actually asked Melinda to join us and speak on the subject. She can obviously speak more intelligently because I don't cultivate. But I was, I was very fortunate also to find from Colorado Department of Re- no, sorry. Colorado Marijuana Enforcement Division, the list of all of the various cities, what they allow, what their tax rates were. In particular, the excise tax. That's what would be, I guess, the comparable to Trinidad's cultivation fee. They've actually done an excise tax as opposed to the cultivation fee. So I actually didn't find anybody else who did a cultivation fee as anywhere in the state, just us. So they're all doing it on this excise tax on a percentage basis, which affects then appropriately, I guess, affects that market rate on the various forms of the plant, if that makes sense. So if you don't mind, Mayor, I did ask Melinda. She's, um, she's someone who has headed up the collaborative group that our local industry has so that they can bring things forward to city council and help us understand what their circumstances are. So she did review the spreadsheet. I think she can speak a little bit more than that.
And that, that's the hard thing for us to understand.
It is.
We're not in that business, like I said, in, in all of the categories, you know, from the average market rate to the bud, the trim, the allocated for extraction. I mean, all those categories to, for us to determine that, we don't know what-
No. And to be honest with you, until I went through this exercise, I didn't understand what the issue was either. I didn't realize that, how we were negatively impacting them just saying $25 per pound regardless. Well, $25 is significant on the products that they're not able to sell for a whole lot of money.
Melinda, you, uh, let's see if you can kind of educate us a little bit on this.
I will try because it is a little bit complicated. But what, what Arda was talking about in regards to the different categories is when you, when you harvest a whole plant, there's a large majority of that that is trim versus flower. And even of the flower, you, you break it down into typically an A bud versus B bud if you are going to sell it as a raw product. And what that means is the A product is worth more even than the B product and it has a different market rate. But specifically in regards to the trim portion of a harvested product, which is anywhere from 30 to 40%, sometimes more. It's, it's dependent on the cultivar or the strain of the cannabis, what, what type of strain it is. And different strains or cultivars have a different trim amount. But typically somewhere in the 30 to 40% range is how much of that is trim. And as you can see from the chart that you're looking at, trim specifically is not worth much in the market depending on what you're going to use it for. And it's worth, and it, and the, the portion of product that is going towards, for example, a concentrate is worth even less. Um, and on top of that, there's something that's called wet whole plant extraction. And in that respect, what they're doing is they're taking the plant and they're freezing it and delivering it to a manufacturer to have a concentrate made out of it. And if you can just imagine when you freeze dry something, it weighs a lot more than when you're harvesting, curing it and drying it. And so that per pound for a freeze dried plant is also worth something different. So if you are just doing a set flat amount per pound, that the, those particular products such as the trim and the concentrate, you are taxing at an amount that it makes it not even worth it to transfer it out. If it's only worth $100 to $200 per pound, by the time you do the 15% state excise tax and the $25 pound, the margin on that completely is almost negligible. So in order to put the labor, which is one of the highest costs, right, of harvesting product, by the time you put in the labor to test it, to pay the excise taxes, it's, it's, it's dollars on per pound. So does that answer some of your questions?
Yeah, it's clear as mud, but yeah. And it's, it's a very complicated thing. The other thing that I was thinking about, and I'm not sure if this plays into it, uh, one of the things that, one of the, when we had this discussion prior to tonight, you know, inter-business transfers.
Yeah.
And that was another thing that maybe, I'm not sure what kind of consideration we have to give there. Is, do you have a position on that or do you have any thoughts on that?
Definitely. We, we operate in Garden City also and we pay, they do charge an excise tax, but they only charge it for product that's getting shipped out of their jurisdiction. Because other, and their words otherwise were really triple charging the cultivation. So in, where you have a cultivation and a store, you get the excise tax from the cultivation plus the sales tax. Um, and so, so the city only charges if it goes outside of the area because you, because the town does benefit from the taxes of selling the product within the city limits of Trinidad. And so to me, it's advantageous, I mean, you would want growers to sell all of their product to the stores within Trinidad so you get that sales tax, right? I mean, that's, in, um, in general, you would want to promote that transfer.
Okay, so a question on that portion. So you're talking about stores outside of the, of the cultivation area. So let's say you have a retail outlet that has a cultivation in their back and that inner store transfer would not, is what you're saying is something that should be not considered. But let's say they have another store across town. Would there, should we charge them?
If, so if it's within the city limits, the, the way Garden City does it is that there's no tax period. So if, if you are transferring to an affiliated license within that jurisdiction, there's no additional tax collected. We also have a store in Fort Collins. So anything that we transfer from our grow to our store in Fort Collins is taxed.
That makes sense. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So-
We need all the questions that we can get right now.
Well, Melinda, if you were, would your preference be that Trinidad charges by the pound or by percentage excise tax for the, the applicable sales? If it's percentage, does it work less?
Yep. My preference would be no excise tax.
That wasn't one of the choices though.
So personally, I, it makes more sense to me to charge a percentage. Therefore, it will go with the value of the AMR, the state AMR, makes the most sense. Um, and it also makes sense to me to base it, just like the state does in regards to what, what the product is valued at. In, in other words, is it trim? Is it flower? Is it going for extraction? Is it, is it a wet whole plant that's going, is it freeze dried? If, if you just use all of the same categories that the state is using, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You just have to decide your percentage and say, this is the percentage that we're going to do based on the state, um, AMR and, and use that and not, and not have to kind of redesign your whole system.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna hold out for more information. It's a lot to take in, so I have no questions at this time.
I, when we were having this discussion with some of the industry here, there is, at least by my understanding, there was indication that if our rate structure changed, that we would get additional usage of product that is just now going to waste, at least that was my understanding. Is, is there any way to, I mean, not to quantify in a hard fashion, but at least to estimate that?
Like, are you asking me how much some cultivations are possibly throwing away material?
Yeah, that, yeah, that would answer the question.
Okay, so, um, I, I don't have a hard number on that because I don't know exactly who is actually doing that. But if, if you, if it's 40% of your plant, you could just, whatever. I think you would have to honestly speak with the cultivations that exist in Trinidad and ask them how much of the product that they are deeming unworthy to process. If, if it was for our cultivation and it's 40%, it's, whatever your revenue is, you would take 40% of that is a possible amount that is getting wasted.
Okay.
I guess, I guess what it really boils down to, Ms. Garrett, is this, is that currently, you know, our $25 per pound, we know is probably too high. So if we took it down to somewhere between $10 to $15 per, per pound, that's what we're saying. But then utilizing some of these different ways of coming up to the same amount would probably be the only way that we could. So at least we have some revenue from it so to make sure that we're not losing all the revenue, but we're not also, you know, overcharging them at the same time.
But by definition, Mayor, would it potentially be a lot better solution to go to a percentage base?
That's what I'm saying, just look at these different avenues is the best way to. And, Arda, do you think you guys have enough information on that? Do you can come up with some reasonable figures with, uh, because that would be a lot of Cheryl stuff too.
I, yeah, I do. I think, I guess what I would want to know is if council wants to do away with any cultivation fee when it's a transfer in the city limits.
Yes.
If you want to do away with that, that's simple, we just remove that. And then I, I agree that we should be on a percentage basis for this fee because, um, I think it makes a lot of sense to just follow the state's scheme and recognize that, that ours isn't working under, it's just not working that way for them.
No.
And it can't, so, um.
I guess the, well, the other thing is to come up with what kind of cultivation they have and with these, I did, these other fees, however they're structured, to see what kind of dollar amount that we would get from all these fees. Way we would restructure it.
Yeah. We can, I don't know if we would be able to gather that information from the state or not. That would be on their tax returns that that detail is in there.
And especially because we don't break it down now, right? So I don't know, yeah, I don't know if we would have that information.
But what I would say is that potentially, potentially it's, in my mind, it's better to keep the cultivations operating rather than see them shut down because we're, we're pricing them out of, out of, even the competition. So I, I guess I would need to know from council also. So you don't want to collect any cultivation fee on, in community transfers?
I agree with that.
And then, um, are you wanting a 5%, 4%, 3%?
I think we could do what some of these other places are doing. We could do the, the 5% adjustable if necessary.
Adjust, adjustable down if necessary?
Let's keep our options open.
That's what I read. So language.
Some of these places, their options go with to from 5%, that's the-
10, I think.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But you want to start at the 5% level?
Who's constantly, 5%?
What?
It seems like that's generally the way it's done in the state, so.
But no excise tax on in-
I did have a question, Arda. Sorry, would you be able to show us a past quarter at 5%?
Right.
Would you be able to do that?
I'm sure Cheryl can.
I'm sure she's really glad.
She's not there cringing.
Like put it into a matrix.
I apologize. Yeah.
I'm sure we'll see a reduction in what we collect. There's no doubt. But it's better than seeing these cultivations have to close their doors and-
But, but we haven't taken into account, because I, I really remember one of the gentlemen that was here that said, there's products that will, that are not being used currently that would be used. So we may see a reduction on the past quarter.
That's right.
But there's going to be more product put in use. And so it would be nice to see, if it's not too much work, it would be nice to see, okay, we lost X thousands of dollars, but what we gained is not tangible because we just don't know. But, so we're gonna lose X thousand and hopefully everyone is cross their fingers we're gaining something because instead of throwing away, burning it, whatever happens, they're using it into a product.
I think that's going to be difficult as well because that's going to involve reaching out to the specific cultivators and ask how much they're getting rid of.
We just leave that part as unknown in my mind.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I, I'm just saying, let's grasp the tangibles that we have. And if, if we can look at a past quarter, it goes down X thousand and then we hope. I mean, that's not a good thing.
Okay, you got everything you think you need? Okay, you got everything you think you need?
Just timing, how soon do you want to see an ordinance?
I, you know, all this stuff tonight, I, I think we just need to take our time to make sure we get it done right, rather than say we want it done within the next work session, next meeting, I, I think that's not reasonable. But let's take our time to make sure we get it done right. That's my.
So what I would.
I think sooner rather than later, though.
What I would say is keep in mind, please, that they have tax filing requirements on the 20th of the month, so. That's going to, it's going to drive what they have to pay in, in even the next filing, depending on how you line it up. We're August 16th is our next meeting. If that's first reading, September 6th is second reading. They can realize the relief from that as soon as September 16th without reporting. Otherwise, we're not looking at any relief for that industry until October.
If it's possible for there to be, it's easy, we should do that.
Yeah, we, if we can do it all together, that's my.
And the question is how fast can you?
Just kidding, what's happening?
The question is, how fast can you get it done? It's not a question of.
We'll get it done.
You can do it then.
Even if we have to make slight adjustments between first and second reading, that's allowable. Get something in front of you to consider and then.
We have a special.
That's true. Okay, Audra, item four, second quarter 2022 marijuana tax allocation. And you hide my chart here. Cheryl. There you are. She's hiding. She always wears black and sits in the corners. She's kind of obscure, you know.
Good way to do it.
All righty. In your package, you should have the second quarter requests from our departments. You can see that second quarter 2022 yielded a much smaller amount than previous year's quarter or two. Actually, the second quarter 2022 came in even a little bit under second quarter 2018. So in the far right corner, you'll see the marijuana sales for 19, 20, 21, and 22, and you can see the significant drop. Anyway, that leaves $487,000 available for allocation. And the department heads did submit their requests for your review. They are available for questioning if you have any questions. Oh, one item of note, the golf course had requested a greens mower and then retracted the request. They preferred to move their item that was second on their priority list to the top. However, that item is about $81,000 and we didn't have that much left. So they're going to forego this quarter and possibly ask for it next quarter. And that $58,000, we think, can be allocated to a camera slash security system at the golf course since we've had so many break-ins there, as well as a camera security, or a security system at our fleet maintenance building. And then if there's any remaining, start working away at the utility buildings for their security systems.
Well, you know, one, one area that I really think, or we need cameras, is at the top of Simpson Drive.
Mr. Mayor, we already have them up there.
Do we?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, what about the community center?
That's an alarm system.
Yeah, we kind of really need to get that.
Cameras. Maybe Janice can speak to that, here it comes.
Yeah, Mr. Whorley, would you approach, please?
Yes, sir. Okay, what was the question?
Community center.
Community center.
Cameras.
We have security cameras covering inside and outside. We currently are looking at putting in an alarm system. So recently, we had somebody break into glass and spent, I don't know, however much time it was.
An hour and 45 minutes.
45 minutes?
An hour and 45 minutes.
Hour and 45, yeah. So we didn't have any, any alarm systems in place. And didn't we do that already?
What about a motion? What about a motion sensor system inside the gym area and inside there?
Yes, so we're looking at door sensors on all the doors, exterior doors. Door sensors on the two sheds or three sheds that are outside, because we keep getting stuff stolen from there. Motion sensors inside the sheds in case they go some other direction. Motion sensors inside the community center, glass break detectors. So a full, complete system in addition to the security cameras.
What's the security camera situation at Ball Park?
Ball Park.
Central Park?
Central Park, we have a single, actually, we have a four-way camera and a pan tilt zoom camera there, but we only have one location for it. And.
Is it the dugout, is it at the concession?
So if you're standing, if you're standing at home plate, it's going to be left field, there's a really tall pole, but it's kind of right at the edge of left field. That covers that area pretty decent, at least for what baseball diamond is. But if you wanted to cover like playground area, it's, I mean, it's too far away to get a good.
What about the dugout, I mean, the dressing room area there? Where they keep this, where they get this off for wheelers and stuff? Is there a camera there?
At the community center?
No, at the Central Park in that area there, too.
No, we just have that single camera.
You don't have anything there? Because where the concession stand, they broke into that?
I'm trying to remember where the concession stand is. I'm not.
It's on that whole plate.
On that whole plate, so one of the cameras does focus kind of in that area, but there again, we're talking about such a distance. Essentially, that camera was put up, well, it was before I was, I came in, but I'm guessing to cover, I don't know, if we had like the Blues Fest out there, you kind of get an overall view, but nothing really specific. So if we're wanting to cover those areas, we need to put cameras, additional cameras in.
And then someone had, I had, maybe they've taken care of it, but the lighting in that bottom area, there wasn't any lighting. I don't know if that's part of the security, but it might be something that could be looked at, too.
On, on the security cameras, we kind of rely on the night vision. But as Chief can attest, most of the people that are breaking into the community center go in baseball hats and, and face masks and hoodies and everything. So the cameras, I mean, we can get a rough idea that, you know, the two people broke in are like our height or taller or larger, whatever, but.
What's the cost of a camera?
So typically, depending on which brand we go with, I usually price it at between $1,000 and $1,500 per location, so per camera. So that's with cabling and the network hardware, you kind of average it out. It's roughly about between $1,000 and $1,500.
So we're talking about taking that $59,000 change in there and dividing that into the other cameras? Is that what your recommendations are at this point in time? So I guess maybe where the biggest impact would be, like you said, they break in and they're fully hooded up and it's almost impossible to.
Right.
But I don't know if it's a deterrent or not, but.
Kind of, but that goes in conjunction with an alarm system. So just a rough guess, I'm thinking maybe, I don't know, 10, 12 cameras at the golf course, watching the fuel tanks. Guido was telling me the other day that every time they get a fuel delivery, they've got somebody around, of course, with the gas prices who can blame them. So trying to get in and steal fuel out of the tanks. So we definitely need, or they definitely need, however you want to phrase that, at least one or two cameras strategically placed so that they can't cut the wires like they did last time. And the cameras I'm looking at upload to the cloud immediately. So even if there's no real wires to cut because they're up on the pole and all we do is provide power to them. So we're not stringing wires somewhere else to cut that would stop the recording.
Now, the alarm system that you're talking about that would go in conjunction with the cameras, what would the cost for it up there be?
Rough guess, I'm thinking, which one we just got to call? Oh, for the community center. So for the community center, we just got the alarm system re-cloaked and to cover again all the doors, motion sensors, glass breaks, we're just under $9,000. So I'm thinking the golf course should possibly be up to same.
So really, we can, we can do some, you know, with the cameras and the alarm systems, we can cover some other areas that are, I think.
We can. And my goal is to get all the city buildings covered eventually. For the next few quarters, you'll probably see some requests from me.
We have some issues at the sewer plant, too.
Yes, we did.
We need to get the cameras.
And sewer plants on, on the list as well.
I'm breaking.
That's what I said.
Yeah. I guess so.
What they did.
And don't, every time the golf course gets broken into, does that hit our insurance?
For the most part, some, some of it does.
So we're going to offset, you know, we're going to spend money on alarm system, security system, but we're going to save money on insurance.
I guess the best way, you know, take that allocation distributed, you know, where we feel that the best use would be, I think, that's my, that's my thought. I'm not sure what council thinks.
And in terms of what we have left, because we just got the fire department covered with alarm system or security, I don't think we're doing, are we doing alarm systems there? No, okay. So our utility departments, gas department, gas, water, power, light, a power plant. Not so much a power plant within the alarm system because it's manned all the time, but at least with cameras. And fleet maintenance, yes. So we've got four, five buildings left to do.
Actually, I'm not sure if council has other ideas, but I just think that put it in your guys' hands to see the best place. It's on the community center and the golf course where the two that are kind of the top of this.
Those, those are high up. The other places I was looking at specifically were around the water department and power and light with the poles and some of the hardware that's there. Copper, for instance, it's easily stolen and resold, so.
And the other thing we could do, you brought up the question about Central Park. And Central Park, by not being used so much now in the wintertime, but maybe in future allocations, that would be maybe consideration.
So those outdoor camera locations, we're looking at about 5,000 per camera, roughly.
At Central Park?
Anywhere, if we wanted to put a camera, I, we talked about putting a camera at Commercial and Main. I'm kind of looking down.
So you have to get a lot of break-ins at the Ball Park?
Not only that, but for traffic and, yes. But those cameras that we use outdoor, they're pretty, between $5,000 and $7,000. And costs have gone up, so per camera location.
I think you go ahead and get, you know, which buildings or what areas are we going to want to re-camera and put alarm systems in just when we bring this forward for the final vote, just so that we'll know what you're going to be covering. And of course, you're going to redistribute that $59,000 accordingly. But I'm not sure council has any other thoughts on that, just go ahead, Rob.
And then today, I was going to say, today I was looking at changing out the cameras at the police department, adding a security system for the community center, and then of course, battery backups to.
Yeah, I got that.
Computer hardware.
Are there any other, any questions on any of the other projects that are listed on this list? The requests? I do have one, but I'll wait till.
Are we going to hear about the master plan for the outdoor recreation?
That's the one I have a question.
I do, too.
And the reason why I have a question is that we have money that we're doing a plan right now for the city of Trinidad, that $300,000 that we have in place, that's supposed to take care of some of the recreation things that we have going on in town. So why would we want to do, put money toward an actual master plan to hire somebody when this is already ongoing? That's my question.
I talked to Rick and Jim Green, is, she's pushing for a new master plan and possibly a consultant.
I see, and that's my, that's my question is that we have a consultant already working for us in, through that $300,000 grant to look at recreation. So that would be something that I think that I would not hesitate to take that, this, that line. I am out here and let Jim, Jim Green talk to that, to them, to see how that fits in with what she's trying to do as far as a master plan.
It strikes me, too, that, we've been talking a lot about weeds, but we've been getting into the weeds a lot with this stuff. And I think the reason for that is that shows Audra is doing a magnificent job. But these are questions that a city manager really should address in terms of priorities. And we're, you know, what are we doing about marketing and how does this fit in? And so that was, my thought was, I don't want to piecemeal out what our, if this has anything to do with our recreational message, I don't want to piecemeal it out to some consultant, but then another consultant is going to come down there and say, well, that wasn't exactly the right approach. I, I just want it to be done globally.
And that's why, you know, we've talked about, you know, talking about the various boards and commissions. And they, they need to start talking to amongst themselves more so. And I think this is one area that I think is with the grants that are out there that we have. And I think that, that's where I'm coming from.
Yes, but again, I think this is, this is something that when our city manager is in place, it's something that he's going to have to go. We have a grant that would cover that rather than coming out of marijuana.
So do you, do you guys want to exclude that out of this particular, out of this revenue funding?
I think it would be super important first to establish that there are true, true parallel paths and that we can achieve the desired output out of the community-wide one versus just eliminating outright. But I mean, it is a, a super appreciable amount of money. And I think it would be good due diligence to ensure, I mean, I, I think that we should get some more specific information about it.
May I speak? 50, if you look at all the other requests from the other departments, they're pretty detailed. I mean, we know what we're getting for the amount of money we're expending. This is just, we want $50,000. I, I think we've come to the point where we just can't cart block all these expenses as well if you look at our revenues going down as much as they have. And if I remember correctly, when Mr. Kresler was the chair of the Parks and Rec, he had a pretty comprehensive master plan. I'm wondering if they could look at that and retweak it? Or are they going to just throw it away and start?
I think they're going to take the best parts of that plan and just update it since we got vicious leak and other things, because that plan is 2016.
He did, he did a pretty good job of that.
He did, it's tight. I look at it, you know, I think they said they do it every seven years. And we're in the expiration date.
We're in six, yeah.
So I guess at this point, do we take this $50,000 and move it to somewhere else for better use?
Yes, for the time being. I think it'd be prudent on our part to do that.
Would, right off the top of my head, putting it back into some of the camera systems that we are needing or other areas that Audra is any place else, you think that would be good to allocate that funding for?
The city park.
Yeah. Careful to talk about that.
Why the city park?
Access controls.
Yes.
It's a great idea. Equipment delays. So council approved access control, door access control in almost last year. Yeah, it was last year. And we've been waiting for the manufacturer to get the product. So I ordered the network hardware that council approved back in fourth quarter last year that we placed the PO in February. And we're still waiting on to take delivery. So we've, we've got a lot of POs out there, but we're sitting on a lot of money because they can't get the product.
That's money that was already allocated.
Yes.
So security wise?
I'm sorry, Audra.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
So I'm at the point right now where I'm considering. So I'm at the point right now where I'm considering changing vendors on the system that we have, that we previously issued the PO for, for City Hall, to a company that does have product in stock. They're based out of, both the companies I looked at are based out of California, but for some reason, the first one I chose, they don't have any stock now. Although a month ago, when I sent them the PO, they did say they had it, so. At least the system that I would consider for the golf course and the rest of the buildings, I'm told that they have stock for everything. They look more expensive, but we can get the product delivered.
So is that what council wants to do with that fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Re-allocate it to other areas? The next question I had, and Chief Orioso, are you still here?
Yes.
Can I come forward and I got a question for you on that one.
Thank you, Cheryl and James.
Thank you.
Good job up here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The question I have, Chief, is the tasers, you showed that, are you, there's like twenty-six officers that you have right now?
Right.
And you have so many that, the tasers that you have, how old are they? I can't remember what it's.
So it's, the last time we came forward for tasers, there wasn't enough money, so I just bought enough for patrol. This will now make the entire department up to date. Plus the ones that like myself carry and the detectives, the software isn't gonna support them anymore.
Basically, we're beholden to the.
They're past their service time.
The tech companies again.
Yeah.
Cheryl, I was gonna ask you, are you using the Viper Tech BTS nine eighty-nines with three hundred million volts? Because those are about eighteen hundred apiece. Does that include the cartridges and the batteries and the docks?
So I have, the breakdowns should be in there of exactly what they cost. If you go to the Exxon price sheets, it shows what we're buying and how much each one costs. So we, in the past, we've bought in payments, but if we buy the forty-two thousand at once, it's an eleven thousand dollar savings for us.
Just the life of a taser or uses, I guess you could say, how do you determine that?
So I mean, we've had these now for, I wanna say, four years, if I'm not mistaken. But it's the software upgrades that they gotta, that they gotta go through. And the device, when you shoot the device, it records all the information, like how long the officer deployed the shock, when, where. So it's, that's.
So the question here was, you know, you're using a company that, it sounded like the support is going away or no longer being supported?
On the old ones, on the old tasers.
And that, they're about four years old?
No, those are a lot older than that, those are probably ten years old.
Questions?
No questions.
Is that the active shooter training that you're doing?
Yeah, we, about three weeks ago, we were able to utilize the Trinidad High School. And, you know, it's different when you're in a simulator, but when you're actually using that live simulations, it throws a whole different cast on what we're doing and how, you know, how intense it can be. So that training's invaluable. And it gets the officers in the schools, it gets in the floor plans, it's valuable. And plus, we have inter-agency, we have sheriff's office there, we have division parks there, we have people from where for no there. So it was a very good training.
This is kind of outside of what we're talking about here, but I think it's very pertinent, it's that with school shootings, like what happened down in Uvalde, is that, have you guys determined, you know, when, if, God forbid, something like that happened here in Trinidad, that we have so many officers there and so many agencies? Who's in charge? I think that's the main thing, that it sounded like that was the biggest flaw that was out there.
Right, so I mean, we're going in. Whether it's one officer, whether it's two officers, three officers, we're going in immediately. And command is set once someone in command gets there, but those initial seconds, it's those initial responders. There's really not a lot of command decisions made at that point, other than get in there, stop the shooters.
That's what I think the community wants to hear, is that, you know, you guys are ready, prepared, and ready to do the job. Unfortunately, it's a dangerous job, but hopefully it's a better job. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Chief. Yes, thanks.
Okay, any other questions on the marijuana requests other than that? And the reallocation of that fifty-nine thousand?
Fifty.
The fifty thousand? Okay, so I guess move it to the next meeting, okay? Item five, a CML policy committee appointment, discussion of any legislative or policy proposals for the committee to consider. Like I said, so far, I've been on the CML Policy Committee. Last year was kind of an all-in, but sometimes I'm unable to go and I had. I know I have, you go a couple times and I asked you to go. I'm still willing to do it as far as I know, unless something happens, but that's up to council, whatever you guys feel.
I'll probably when there's something.
My shuttle, if something comes up, I'll reappoint you first because you're mayor of Toulon. And one of the things that will happen, like I said, next year, I'm toward the end of the year, we'll probably reallocate that, so at least get you whoever we wanna reappoint to maybe early on, so that you kind of get used to where those are in CML, because I'm limited. So we'll look at that next year, okay? The other thing is legislate any policies or items that you feel maybe we want to bring up, now would be the time to talk about it. If there's any policies statewide that affect us, or that could affect us, that maybe need changing, other than everything? That's something interesting, that's something interesting to think about.
Well, the only thing I could think about, I could think of is this may not be such an issue if money statewide rises up and it's not gonna be the same amount that it was coming out of COVID, but that they advocate for administrative support money with the grants?
And monies?
Yeah, because they task cities to do things, but they don't always think through what it's gonna cost the city to do it. So that's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, that is, and that's been brought up before. A lot of concern about that money.
Mayor, if you look at the roster for CML, it shows me and it doesn't show Mayor. So we need to get that.
Yeah.
The other thing, and I'll mention this to you guys, is that Action Twenty-Two, we're going to have a mayor's conference, it's like the week after Labor Day. And one of the things that I'm going to bring up is the judiciary system that we have in place right now. And I need to talk to Chief Orioso, I've had some discussion with him already, and I asked him, what is the biggest problems that we see out there? And he says, "Well, bail, the amount of bail money that they're charging, it's only like fifteen, fifteen percent or something like that. No money goes to the jail. It only goes to, it goes out of square." I personally feel that that dollar amount should be raised to like twenty-five percent. Ten percent should go to the jail system? Because the counties five-foot the bill to put these people in. And the other thing that he's saying is that these people are apprehended, and I don't care if it's one time or ten times, it seems like they're let out on bail. So I think that some of these things maybe need to be revisited. And I'm gonna bring this up at this mayor's meeting to see if that's something that Action Twenty-Two will want to approach. And not only Action Twenty-Two, but CCI, I've talked to Felix Lopez about this already, also Pro Thirty, Pro Fifteen, get all these different entities involved to get some, you know, get some thoughts on this, because it's a huge, huge problem. And people go ahead and they get let out, get let out on bail immediately, no matter if they've been apprehended one time or five times, it just seems that way. They just go out, they go out the same night, do another job. And that's, and that's where the community is very, very frustrated.
The strong trend has been towards liberalizing rental requirements.
And that's.
And letting people go, yeah, strong trend.
Well, they're talking to, actually, I talked to our lobbyist, and what he was saying is that the, the liberal side of things, like say, they want to decrease the amount of some of these things that they're, these levies that they're putting in there for time limit or whatever you're talking about. But the thing about it is that the sheriff's department across the state, they don't wanna do anything, they just wanna leave it as it is. And I think the reason is, is because they're having to foot the bill in their jail systems for these people that are apprehended. As a matter of fact, Mike Beasley was the lobbyist for the Sheriff's Association. He fired him because they could deal with him. That's what he told me, which is interesting. But anyway, I just wanna say I wanted, we're bringing that up. One other item that we thought about is the, that may be brought up, is the money that we get from mineral deposits, what do you call that? What do you, what do you call that?
Severance tax.
Is that, severance tax goes to everybody in the state. Why should it go up to Colorado Springs and Denver where they have no mineral deposits?
We pay millions here to get back tens of thousands.
Exactly, and we believe that it should come back to the producing areas. So there's a couple of things that we may talk about.
That's a hard balance.
Exactly. I'm not sure if we can do any of it, but we're sure last, take a stab at it.
I think it needs to be addressed.
There was that, the northern Colorado briefly discussed the seceding to separate state assembly.
Anything else legislative-wise that you see that is a real deterrent to us doing business?
You know, our water and utility director had some concerns about added regulations. They keep adding and adding and adding regulations on our utilities and there's, there's, it's making it really hard to cover the costs. Most recently, lead and copper.
That'd be another item that I could bring up, we could talk about.
And I forwarded that to Mike Beasley this morning so that he can take a look at it too. I mean, we certainly recognize the importance, but there, the costs for new regulations, I don't know that we're getting the benefit or the public is getting necessarily the benefit for that cost.
And that's the way it is with, you know, any new code that's come out. We're talking about even the building codes. Anytime they add a building code to, you know, for building a house, it raises the cost another thousand, fifteen hundred bucks. They keep talking about affordable housing. Well, that went out the window fifteen, twenty years ago. If it's attainable now, that's really the way it should be referenced now, or is attainable. And, but, some of these regulations have just gotten out of, and some of them are really ridiculous. I saw that when I was in the industry. But, okay, anything else? Any other items you wanna bring up in the future?
There is, I did wanna bring this up. And I don't know if we can do about, what we can do about it, but there's been a lot of public discussion. Right there, Adamson Main, I don't know if that, that's gotta be city property. The guard railing there that goes down to the second, the second floor down below that business, I mean, it's nowhere near OSHA compliance standards. And that may not be governable by OSHA compliance standards, but what I would say is, people with toddlers, if one of them got away, I mean, they could take a pretty severe fall.
Well, it's somebody who posted that on Facebook.
Yeah, why aren't there grades over that? That's a good question.
I guess somebody can answer better than I, but it was supposed to be, that's the original ground floor in Trinidad.
You could do, but you could do.
Long time ago, I mean, why is it that graded?
The owner, I think, wanted it that way.
And I imagine that rail is probably the owner's also.
Oh, is it? But I mean, it is a pretty severe public hazard. I mean, and there's building codes. If it's truly the private property, building codes should cover that. And building codes, I think, would say a four-inch. Four inches, yeah?
No.
I mean, it's supposed to be.
Don't say four inches.
No, four-inch, four-inch slats, slats of it. If it can get.
What I mean is, when you're in a big city and you walk over some kind of a lower level, it's always got some kind of a grate over it and the airflow continues. It's not.
Fix that fence, grate, grate or fence.
But you can get underneath that fence.
I guess what we could do is just, you know, have maybe the building firm just ask them if we can do some.
Yeah, we'll definitely look at it and see what we can do about it.
Do you know another thing that I've seen twice already? You know, there at Tony's Diner, there's a big hole, and I think it's the grate system there too. Somebody went over and their car dropped in and they couldn't get out and because it's about that deep. And I saw two cars there at different times. They went over the bottom of that hole. So I don't know if they could do anything to keep, to raise that up or put a grate in. Right next to Tony's Diner on the. I mean, that hole is pretty deep. I seen two cars that now would. Okay, so guys, is there something else?
I had a few people ask me about animal control and the raccoon population, and they're reoccurring. And I said, "Well, I don't know if it's a collaborative effort with animal control and Bob Holter, Division of Wildlife."
Animal control with wild cat populations, people feed that.
I've been badgered about raccoons.
What'd you say about mantras?
I know.
Badgered?
I talked to someone from animal control.
Yes.
They were saying that they were buying some more traps, so.
I also had someone that's very concerned about our bear population too, and the dumpsters getting dumped over. They think that government should intervene in this instance. I tried to explain, we attempted that one time with bear-proof trash cans and the hollers, I mean, that's a significant expense for them and they'll pass it on then to the, to their customers and.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know how we can control that. Aside, it's personal responsibility and people just need to do their very best to strap those containers up and.
You know, we live in an area where, you know, there's a lot of wildlife. Okay. See you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.